Have you seen the other guys?
Thanks for responding.
No.
Oh, my God.
Thanks for the question.
What would a meeting like this be without questions?
Yes.
And sometimes in the.
Yeah, that's all. I appreciate it.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Winnetka-Villesville Study Session for June 14th, 2022. We'd like to call the meeting to order, ask everybody to mute your. And press please to call for attendance.
Trusty Bearden.
Here.
Trusty Ford.
Here.
Trusty Apple.
Here.
Trusty Wright.
Here.
Trusty Mancini.
Here.
Here. A public comment. Is there anyone in the room this evening who would like to speak on anything that is not on the agenda?
I think we dreamed that last week.
I will say some, I just, I will say one thing I had a, was talking to Chief Hornstein. I was, I'm the liaison to the chamber and I.
Hello?
I was, as a liaison to the Chamber of Commerce, I walked through the, what's going on in town and what's opening and what we're doing. I mentioned how's the bike ordinance going? Wrong thing to ask. Everyone, they exploded. They were not happy with what's going on and from a couple of standpoints. One is the fact that they're, for a large part ignoring it and even worse that when the shop owners, including the bike shop, she was one of the loudest advocates for this walking rule. They, when they do call the kids and say, hey, look at the signs, they're downright rude, obstinate and disrespectful. And we just talked about it. We're gonna, they're gonna have officers policing more. I almost, was almost wiped out with my five-year-old grandson by two freshmen, that's my guess, on the bike. And I literally pull them out of the way, right by Tru Juice. So, just as an FYI, it's, somebody will get whacked and unfortunately the kids are ignoring it. And I almost, we talked, I think it's almost more of a not educating the kids as you should, just the kids, it should be the parents still. And the parents have to be responsible to have that talk with the children because it's being ignored. So, that's all. Thanks.
Okay. More to come on that. One of the problems I see, Rob, is that the signs are blown all over the village.
I need to.
They look, they look horrible and they never are where village staff leaves them, so we're gonna have to figure out something. Of course, they're ignoring the signs anyway, so.
I almost got hit because the kid was trying to avoid the sign.
Good.
I'm not kidding.
No, that's funny.
My smart kid.
I still think foot patrols are the way to go. I'm still, I'm still waiting for the day that our Auntie Fife arrives here and he can just wander around town and knock on businesses and meet with people and, and become somebody who is a familiar face in the downtown area and that would just be a wonderful thing to have. So, when you're doing your budget next year, maybe you can think about an extra on foot guy. I just. Just a thought, and I'm sure you and Rob.
So, my sister-in-law, who was, when she was 16 in Winnetka, got pulled over by a Winnetka policeman for running a stop sign on a bicycle. She's 50 years old today and she still talks about it.
Good.
She never runs a stop sign. It's not again, right?
Exactly.
But it also then goes not only kids on the sidewalks.
Yeah.
To groups of bicycles on the streets and highways, going through red lights, Saturday mornings, Friday mornings. They think, there's 30 of them. They can go anywhere they want. So, it's not just the kids. It's also adults on streets.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, I think we just need general reminders. All right, well, let's move along because I know we have some time constraints tonight. My dog needs a walk. Item three is the automated license plate readers. Tonight, council will be discussing the implementation of the automated license plate readers, a system that will be able to detect stolen vehicles or vehicles associated with an endangered person and enhance public safety within the village. And Police Chief Mark Hornstein is here to review. So, take it away, chief.
Thank you, President Rentsch. Counsel. Marina, thank you for advancing the PowerPoint. So, you know, we've had discussions for quite some time internally with license plate readers and, you know, given kind of some of the history and the trend of what's going on with some of the vehicle-related crimes, which I'll talk about in a minute, I thought it was an important issue to bring to your attention and for consideration. So, I mean, clearly, you know, crime prevention is an essential priority for our mission. And, you know, using technology where we can to leverage our ability to prevent crime, we want to explore that to the extent possible. Crimes are often committed involving vehicles, but aside from crime, which obviously is a big part of this, I think sometimes what gets lost in some of the advantages of this technology is being able to help locate missing persons. Amber alerts, silver alerts. There's been many times where I see alerts all the time for a dementia patient, elderly person who has said they were gonna go to an appointment in a car and took off and left and never got to the appointment. And of course, there'll be bulletins that get broadcast, putting out a description of this car, this license plate, and if an officer happens to see it, clearly try and stop it. But where we have this technology, it would allow us to potentially locate these endangered individuals a lot faster. So, I really feel strongly about that, that aspect of enhancing public safety, separate from crime prevention, which are two, two, two very distinct things. So, there's different technologies with, with license plate readers. There's some organizations that use them and put them in, in mobile units and squad cars. You know, I'm not here to, to propose that. I'm looking more for something that would be a fixed reader, a solar-powered fixed reader, that would capture a vehicle's registration, you know, make and model color. So, Marina, if you would mind advancing. So, there's.
Chief, why wouldn't you? What's, what's the difference? Or what's the difference of use for in a vehicle as an assist or an officer? Which is, what's it, why would you not do it one way or the other?
So, if, if it's in a vehicle, you're dependent on, you know, that vehicle being driven around and it's being driven around where it's around, where a fixed location is, if we've, and we have, if we've identified specific locations in the village that we think would be good for capturing high volumes of traffic, like, doesn't matter if there's an officer out there or not, that LPR is gonna capture that.
Okay.
So, this is just a photo of a sample of what a camera would look like. The camera itself is mounted on the right side of the, of the pole right there. The rest of that is just literally a solar panel, solar panel-powered pole that would be affixed into the ground.
Chief, the camera was getting both directions?
No. So, one, you would, you would actually, that's a great question. If you, if you wanted to capture both directions, you'd need two cameras. So, that's one of the things I want to mention on this. For starters and for budgetary purposes, we want to start off slow with, you know, a couple. And then where we, if this is successful and we could budget for it, we would get additional ones. If you could advance. Thank you, Marina. So, just a little background in talking about, you know, vehicle-related crimes. You know, kind of since 2017, we definitely saw a trend. And when I say we, I'm saying like law enforcement in generals. We're talking about northern suburbs, western suburbs, where we would have instances of, of, you know, young people coming into the community, oftentimes in stolen cars, looking to commit additional crimes, whether it's auto burglaries of our residents or stealing cars themselves. Typically, you know, unlocked, fobs left on them, but, you know, all of you are more than familiar with, you know, that problem. We've tried to address over the years here. So, while we've done a lot of proactive initiatives, various techniques on, you know, night shift patrols, all kinds of creative ideas, and had some success with it, like last year, we dropped all the way down to two stolen cars in, in, in 2021, you know, we can't rely on that because I've already had, I've had more than two cars stolen, you know, this year already. So, I don't want to rely on, you know, the, the creativeness of patrolling because we can only do so much. We only have, you know, two officers and a supervisor on the night shift that are out there, right between the hours of 11:00 PM and 7:00 AM. So, there's only so many eyes. And you make one arrest, DUI arrest, that's the minimum of two out of three of those officers that are down. They have to be in the station dealing with that arrestee. There's one officer out there. So, to that point, what the, what the license plate reader system does is it'll, it'll capture the registration. It'll compare that number of the registration with a hot list and it'll check for stolen cars that are entered in there through the National Crime Incident Center, NCIC, and then, of course, it checks for all the missing and endangered persons that I, you know, mentioned previously.
This is real time?
It is. It is, yeah. So, there's a lot of examples where this technology has proven to be highly beneficial in the clearance of, of crimes. If we want to talk about that, we can. Marina? So, here, here's a big thing that, you know, I certainly would ask if I was a resident and, and I'm sure people are curious about is, okay, so chief, this technology is great. That's wonderful. But what about privacy? You know, what are you gonna do to safeguard people's privacy? And that's a very fair question. So, first and foremost is, and you have it, you know, we, we have a draft policy already for how we would regulate the use of the cameras. And we would make this policy public. We would make it transparent. We would post it where any member of the public could read it, review it at any time. They don't have to call me. They could literally get it online where they could see that. We want to emphasize that these ALPRs, these are not traffic cameras. These are not revenue generators. These are not red light cameras. These are not speed cameras. They are not even public safety surveillance cameras. They just, that's not what they're used for at all. They're, you don't get any facial recognition out of them. No person identifiable information whatsoever. The data that would be obtained, meaning the images, because they're not video, right? You know, we, we have public sa, we have a public safety infrastructure now that we have, right? Cameras that are posted at various locations. That's video. You know, this is, this is not that. It's literally capturing images of license plates and vehicles. That's it. The data would be purged automatically on a rolling 30-day schedule unless we flagged it. If we have a reason to believe that that vehicle may have been involved in a crime, then of course, we're going to flag it for further investigation, then it would stay. But beyond that, unless there was a reason that we had to, to pull it, it's gonna be purged. It's gonna be purged. It's our data. So, with this particular vendor that we're looking to engage with, you know, they have a system where it makes it easy to share the data with other law enforcement agencies. If we choose, it's up to us. If we decide, no, we don't want to share with anybody, of course, we could lock it down. I wouldn't recommend that. I, I think we could strategically share some of the data. So, for example, I, and I don't, I don't have the exact number, but there's probably approximately 100 communities or so in Illinois that, that use this, this vendor. We have a really good relationship with what I call the Norcom area police departments and chiefs. You know, the surrounding dozen or so suburbs that we already have intergovernmental agreements with. You know, my recommendation would be that we, we would share that data with them because we already do have IGAs with them and we already do network. There's communities that have already implemented this technology where our detectives have reached out to those communities that we have IGAs with and asked to share that information. So, if council chooses to move forward with this, you know, that would be my recommendation to, to, at the very least, keep it to, to the, the IGA departments. And then if there's other departments outside of here that were looking to access our information, we could be gatekeepers on it and decide, okay, you're asking why? Why do you want the data?
Well, you're already doing that anyway with everything, with other information, so it seems only, and it's, it's helping to solve crimes.
Yes.
So.
Okay. Yeah. Marina, if you want to go ahead and advance? So, as far as data security, the vendor that we would propose to work with, you know, it's stored on AWS Government Cloud, end-to-end encryption. The data is not shared or sold to any third-party vendors. And then, of course, we would maintain internal controls about who we would allow to access this information, you know, within the police department. Next slide, please. So, if we were to move forward on an initial rollout, we think that two locations to start with would be the 1300 Block of Willow Road and the other one being the 1100 Block of Sheridan Road. Now, mind you, this is in, this is in collaboration and discussions with other area chiefs and other village managers about if, if we're all gonna engage in this, is that to manage how many cameras we're all buying and using and sort of developing information sharing that we all just wouldn't go out and just buy 30 cameras. You know, we could be, let's be smart about it. So, that's why if we're, if we're talking about these other towns that I have listed on the PowerPoint, and I won't read them off, you know, if they're proceeding with it, then we'd be able to manage the number of cameras that, that we would deploy. So.
It's a problem that this is probably stated where they're at. Not that I'm assuming criminals are reading our meeting minutes.
No, I mean, they're, the.
Let's come in a different way. Let's get in the tower.
Well, that's what I'm thinking.
Yeah.
Yeah. Put 12 fake ones up.
You, you are, we're saying that, right?
Well, yeah, I, again, I don't know if this is syndicate of vehicle theft or, you know, certainly, I'm assuming silver color is the dementia elderly patient?
Yeah.
Okay. I had never heard that term. It's good to know. That this would not supply that scenario, but any thoughts on probably stating where that?
I, I think it's, I think it's make them omnipresent because if, if all of our neighbors are in on this, it just doesn't get a matter. I mean, we're gonna have all the entries and exits covered. That's kind of the goal, you know, where.
But you're not, they're not sharing real-time information with you. It's only when you ask. So, that's my point. If you have Tower covered and Willow covered and Sheridan covered, then your, our ma, our major entry points are covered.
Well, one thing that's important to keep in mind is, you know, we do share a radio network with our neighboring agencies as well. So, if the neighbors get on board with it and another neighboring community gets a hit on an ALPR, dispatch is gonna broadcast that most likely within 60 seconds. So, we're gonna hear that one just hit in Willmette or one hit in Glencoe or Northfield. So, that's, that's another way of that information sharing via dispatch and the radio for that matter. So, that's the regional approach that I mentioned in the PowerPoint. And, you know, you may ask about, okay, well, there are different types of vendors out there. There's a very limited number of vendors that provide this service. There is another one that we looked at. In our opinion, it's not cost-effective. This vendor that we're recommending, Flock, we feel is the best bang for our buck. And also, it's the preferred one that the other area communities have decided to go with so that just, it makes more sense just to, to use the same platform for sharing purposes.
And kind of on Kim's point about letting people know where they're at, I'm more concerned of seeing a little camera in a, in a really big solar panel. Is there a wired version of the camera that we don't need the solar panel?
So, ironically, there is representative of block safety that's here today. If, if council prefers, he could probably.
Instead of having a new pole put in, can we tie that to an existing pole that already exists, a light pole? And that should be doing IDOT traffic signal pole, but light poles have power in them. So, it's like, I'd rather see that than, you know, one big solar panel for this little camera. I'd rather have it hardwired personally. Again, that would also make it less obvious.
Right, right, right.
Because, you know, as you drive through areas that have red light cameras.
You know.
First thing you look up, oh, there's a camera. I better stop.
Yeah.
I mean, it's pretty easy to see a red light camera. So.
It, it. Not too late, unfortunately.
There are hardwired, uh, black LPRs, like, uh, out here on, uh, if you're crossing any Kinnellworth, you're going over the tracks, like, on Green Bay, they have a hardwired one that is right behind the sign that you can't see that.
Right. It's not a matter of seeing it. There's also just visibility of, over time, every time you want to do something that seems like it's nice, like the crossing signs with the solar panels, it's like, just gets kind of a gnash of seeing them everywhere. So, and then also makes it less obvious because I'm assuming that the real criminal isn't checking to see, geez, which way should I come or leave? And as far as points, you almost need Willow covered both ways or maybe you off the highway, Sheridan for Sharon, Green Bay Road.
On Tower.
On Tower, so, right, yes. So, I'm not sure where you stopped at initially, but that's my thoughts.
One caveat to that is, uh, today, IDOT.
Can you step up to the microphone so we can hear what you're saying?
Sorry. I'm Dan Murdock. I am the sales rep for Flock Safety. I cover all of Illinois. And IDOT today does not allow for installation of license plate readers on existing poles, whether you own them or IDOT owns them. They do not allow for hardwired license plate readers as of right now either. They have to be, there's one specific pole they will let us install and it has to be solar-powered, as of today.
Welcome to Illinois.
Yes. We are working very hard with different groups to, to change that, but as of today, that is the rule, unfortunately.
I wonder who manufactures a solar panel.
Well, it's not, we worked very hard, like, there were no such thing as LPR permits for IDOT roads before Flock came here. So, we worked with IDOT to actually create a permit, but I guess we made it too specific where they, they will not allow, there is no permit that you can apply for to attach an LPR to a, a pole, so you can't do it right now.
Is it only for IDOT road though?
Only IDOT roads. This is only IDOT roads.
So, Winnetka roads are okay?
Yeah. So, also, if you can find places outside the IDOT road.
Sheridan, Willow, Tower.
IDOT.
Green Bay, Tower, Green Bay. That's why I've been pushing so hard to get our jurisdictional transfer done.
Well, we will also work with you to try and find places that are outside the IDOT right away, even if it's just by a foot, that where you can either drop your own pole or if maybe there's a business that has a parking lot, that has a pole up against the side that is willing to let you put the camera on, we will work with you to try, because we don't want to, we would prefer not to have to go through the process of permitting with IDOT because Flock owns that process for you. Part of your contract is we'll contract you directly with a third-party engineering firm that builds the permit, gets it submitted, basically takes it all the way through for you. IDOT permits do take four to six months to get approval. Non-IDOT permits, we can have up in about three to six weeks.
The Democratic Party's election coming up.
Laughing with truth. Do you think it's gonna make a difference?
No.
Wow.
Continue, chief.
Yeah.
Next slide, Marina, please. So, as far as expense, the, the cost is $2,500 per, per camera. If it's on an IDOT road, there's additional costs involved, you know, $750 each. So, there's also a enhanced software package that we would, we would like to purchase as well, gives us some additional features. The, the main one that I'm interested in is, is what we call convoy detection. What convoy detection is, is frequently our experience is that when we get individuals that want to come into the community to commit crimes, they'll sometimes come in in multiple vehicles. And if they had, if the same two cars had passed through another LPR somewhere else, the system will, is smart enough to recognize that. And then if it comes through ours, it's gonna, oh, these cars are traveling together and it'll give an alert that there's a convoy alert. It may be innocuous. It may not be, but it's a data, it's a data point for us to know about individuals. So, if, if we were to try and roll this out this year in the current budget, we're talking $9,000. And we've budgeted for this, which I'll get to in a second. Ongoing expense would be $2,500 per camera on an annual basis. Next slide, please. So, as far as the budget part of it, we have some money in our technology and licensing account. We also have some money as a result of good work of our folks from asset forfeiture that we could use as well to pay for this. So, if the desire of the council is to move forward and we're able to initiate the process, we would, if it's successful, you know, we would evaluate and then try and add some additional cameras next year. So, with that, I'll be happy to entertain any other questions.
So, just so I understand, just doing the math as you guys were talking, it sounds like there's six locations. Willow, Green Bay, Sheridan, Sheridan, Green Bay, Tower. So, that's six times two is 12, if we want to get both ways, which would be 30 grand a year ongoing expense.
So, we would actually only need to do, if our partners are on board with it, we would actually be only doing three locations.
Three locations?
Yeah.
In total?
I got that right on that brief. Yeah.
Someone else's got Green Bay.
Yeah, exactly. We would split it up between Glencoe, Northfield, Kennelworth, covering some of it. So, we would be looking at north into Sheridan Road. We'd be looking at Willow and Hibbert and we'd be looking at Tower and Forest Way.
So, that's, okay, so that cuts it in half then, right?
Yeah.
Because you, you definitely would want cameras going both ways wherever you put these things, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Other questions for chief?
How successful have these been? Any anecdotes stories from surrounding, like, towns?
Deputy chief?
So, out of some of them, just to push on briefly, there, there's still ongoing cases in criminal court, so I will not get into specifics, but one Evanston homicide was cleared as a result of the by identifying a vehicle in 2021 November. As recently as the Skokie incident, May of this year, both LPR cameras were instrumental in identifying the vehicle.
The Skokie incident was that the child, isn't it?
Uh, Willmette had a burglary investigation in January of this year where a victim was stolen. The offending vehicle was caught on the LPR.
Pulling it out.
Subsequently arrested.
They're giveaways. The bumper was screaming.
Kennelworth had an incident in 2021 where an LPR hit on a stolen car. The vehicle was located in Willmette. They waited on the offenders to come back out. They, uh, arrested them while entering the car. Other, other events in Northbrook resulted in a stolen car that were caught possessing a firearm. So, it's a non-issue, it's a cool area.
Well, these are just 2021 and odds. So, it's a lot of significant events that I've heard of.
Uh, Nor, Northbrook had a hit on someone who was wanted for homicide just last month that they arrested from an LPR hit.
I, I'm, I'm such, I'm such a believer in using technology to give you, give a fighting chance. Being someone whose home was been hit three times while we're in the house between 1:00 and 3:00 in the morning. I am, uh, that would have probably solved that earlier because it was somebody that was caught with multiple counts up and down. And, um, and my neighbor had his car stolen. So, I, I've been wondering when we could do this. So, I, I, I love this idea. Gives you guys more of a fighting chance to, to, to catch the bad guys. And it's, and the fact that it's, it's not, there's no discrimination. It's a license plate. That's what you're looking at. No profiles, no nothing. It's about as clean as you can go. So, I think it's great.
Silly question. If, if these cars are on license, could it trigger a heads-up? Because if I was the bad guy that really was thinking, wouldn't I have a car with no license plate? I mean, I'm just throwing it out there. Probably doesn't have.
Or unreadable, unreadable license plate?
Yeah, does it? I'm worried that would, well, I'm sorry.
So, basically, the way these things work is their motion capture. So, anytime something moves in front of it, it's gonna take a bunch of pictures. And then as machine learning run over the top of it, for it to be able to identify a vehicle, the license plate, its color, make and type of vehicle. So, but a lot of these cameras are on two-lane roads, so sometimes you have like U-hauls or big trucks where you're just kind of getting the corner of the car or like it gets blocked. So, we, we don't have, we do not send, send off alerts if it does not see a plate period on a vehicle. But you can create hot lists. So, in South Barrington, this was about a year ago, but they were having an issue. They, they got hit by the same black, it was a Chevy SUV, like, three times in a month, between 2:00 and 5:00 AM and with no plate. So, they put in a filter on their cameras to be alerted if it ever saw a black Chevy SUV with no plate. So, you can create alerts if you, if you specifically know the type of vehicle or like you have a repeat offender, you can create that. But it's not just gonna throw off alerts anytime it like gets a vehicle but doesn't get a whole plate.
Right.
Well, I was gonna question while you're up there, you said it takes a bunch of camera, a bunch of pictures and it has a machine learning on it. How often do these malfunction or what's the maintenance of them?
So, Flock owns the whole maintenance. So, Flock's a fully vertically integrated organization. We, there are no third parties here. We design the hardware and the software to ourselves in Atlanta. We manufacture the camera ourselves in Wisconsin. I'm the sales rep. I live in Brookfield. I'm trying to sell everyone cameras coming around the state. The techs who install the cameras and do the ongoing maintenance, those are also Flock employees. They roll out of Bowling Brook. So, they're gonna come out, they're gonna survey the ground, call 811, drop the poles in, hang the cameras, the whole thing. We also own all the maintenance. We also own all the maintenance as well. So if the camera malfunctions, we roll a tech, we'll come out, like they'll try and fix it. If they can't fix the camera, they hang a brand-new camera, no cost to the city. So again, you're not actually buying cameras from Flock, you are buying the data, and we're responsible to make sure you have working cameras. And the cameras inside them, they get to understand like what they're looking at. So like if it's on Willow Road and it sees 8,000 vehicles a day, then all of a sudden, one day, it's only seeing 500, that sends off an alert to a human back in Atlanta who will review that camera, and like, you know, there was a huge snowstorm that day, okay? Well, makes sense, we're not gonna roll a tech. But if it's a normal day, we will roll a tech. The main admin for the account will get an email that a tech has been scheduled for 8:23. They'll get an email when the tech is en route, and then also an email with the resolution of what happened. So there's a whole ticking process behind that as well.
There's no way of like logging in to see through the camera, right?
Oh, yeah. No, they can. So basically, yes, they can-
So they can also see the camera direction?
Oh, yeah, like, yeah, tell us if something looks weird. But there's internal controls for as well, but yeah, absolutely, like, they're gonna be looking at the cameras more than like our team is, so if they see something, say something.
If cameras go down, how real time is your, both your understanding of when a camera's not working? Like if it's closed down on a Friday night, or it's vandalized or something, within 30 minutes?
Well, I mean, it kinda depends on like the time of day, like at night, it probably wouldn't send out that alert. Normally like a 24-hour period is they're looking at like the capture rate. So it'd probably be the next day is when the alert would go out, and then our SLA is 72 hours to have, to have like a review of the camera. So like-
So are we waiting on you to tell us something wrong, or you see the same type of information, you'll know, we're not gonna-
Well, the goal would be for us, like, we are actively trying to be alerted and do it, but like again, if they see something, tell us, because it's not infallible, we're not infallible, we won't know every single time.
Bob, I saw you grabbing for the microphone.
Well, you know, I'm gonna play devil's advocate on this a little bit.
Yeah.
And I, you know, I like the concept, law and order prevention, but my libertarian side is coming through a little bit on this one. And when I read the Mark your review, and then I read the policy, I found the review to be kinda tight. You know, the Amber Alert, cars, you know, with stolen license plates coming in, license plates that are identified as crime-related, you know, in order it comes up. But then I read that in the policy, it can be used in conjunction with any patrol operation or official department, reasonable suspicion of probable cause is not required for using an APLR. Okay. As an example, we think Joey, 19-year-old Joey is selling dope in Glenview. We're gonna track Joey's car leaving his home, are we gonna be able to follow him? And sort of surveil him, big brother-like surveil, because his license plate's not in the system as a problem plate, but, you know, is that now part of a surveillance? Or Suzie and Joe Smith are having some domestic issues, there's an affair going on, we wanna track where he's going, the lawyer wants to subpoena the information. I mean, I kinda feel like the policy statement should be very tight on this. Cars come in with criminal-related plates, or we wanna surveil a black, you know, whatever that's been in the area, whatever. Fine, but it sounds to me like this could be opened up in other areas potentially. It's kind of the camel's nose under the tent a little bit here. And so your review seemed pretty tight, this seemed a little looser. I don't know where this policy statement came from, I mean, I don't know if this is a standard, whatever, but, you know, I certainly wouldn't want the data to be available-
To anybody.
Andy, you know, if a lawyer comes along, subpoenas the data for whatever reason, I mean-
I'm with you, so I like the program. This struck me as maybe a template policy created by the under, right? So it hasn't been harmonized with what we've got in the PowerPoint. So like in 432.4, the last two paragraphs, talk about the retention and disposal in a way that is good if you're creating a template document that, you know, thousands of departments are gonna be looking at, but I like the way you had it up there, that after 30 days, it's purged, as opposed to just referencing that the data will be downloaded at the server within 30 days from patrol. We're not putting them in patrol cars, so I take that out. Instead of referencing our department retention guidelines, which residents aren't gonna know what those are, I would just put in 30 days unless it's subject of a current investigation, just like you had on the PowerPoint. So those last two paragraphs, I think the best thing you can do in terms of protecting data from subpoenas, because once data's created and it exists, people, you know, you could get divorce lawyers issuing subpoenas.
Yep.
So the best way of dealing with that is the retention and purging, getting rid of it after 30 days. That, for me, that would address a lot of my concerns about-
Most of the get it is purged.
Reaching back two years.
Well, what about the issue, Andy, of reasonable suspicion or probable cause is not required?
So-
That's on 432 dot 3C?
Well, that is-
Well, can I, if I could speak to that?
Yeah.
So that's a, that's a fair question. Here's the thing, is the reason why it's not required is because we may not be acting on it. So no different than, so we have public safety cameras right now, that if I wanted to, I could turn them on, and I could go stare at the bike rack, just watch the bike rack. And I could see people coming and going, but I'm not doing anything, I'm not acting on it. So that's why, I don't need probable cause or reasonable suspicion to do that, this is no different than that. If we're gonna act, if we're gonna take some kind of action, then yes, it would require some type of reasonable suspicion to do a follow-up investigation, and obviously if we're gonna be making an arrest, it would be probable cause for that.
But it doesn't really say, I mean, I, again, I'm not a lawyer, but it says, "An ALPR may be used in conjunction with any patrol operation or official department investigation, reasonable suspicion or probable cause is not required."
Before using, right, I think that's what he's trying to imply, before using.
Correct.
Before using an ALPR.
Before, before we're doing something with the data, before we would do anything with the data.
So like, some of the scenarios you're laying out, there's, you know, and, but, you know, if you were to, for example, say, there's this person, we wanna track them, that is something that I think trips some constitutional requirements and against unreasonable searches and seizures. And so it may not be in the policy, but it is the law if you're gonna be surveilling somebody, you do have to have-
So what's an example of, you know-
Under suspicion for dealing drugs, somewhere, maybe not Wenecka, maybe anywhere. Came to surveil him.
Circle cameras all the way in the village.
Well, you just put in a database, right?
Well, no, but this is different.
Would you have to put somebody, would somebody have to be in a database to trigger it, to be called upon?
That's, that's the question, I know that I have. They're not in the database, but you could surveil. Do you wanna be surveilled? Do you wanna be surveilled for whatever reason?
You know, after Bob planted a question, I think we should put a camera on set of phones.
Yeah, there's a lot going on there.
Seems very, yeah.
Yeah, I'm happy to weigh in.
Okay, please.
The classic privacy protection that is raised by detractors of this technology is the Fourth Amendment, the constitutional prohibition on a reasonable searches and seizures. These challenges have failed in court, because the courts normally conclude that you don't actually have a protectable privacy interest once you're driving around on the road, such that this sort of technology is similar to how a police officer can follow a car for a couple of blocks if it has, you know, some lower level of suspicion. The amount of protection that you have against a search depends on where you are. If you're in your living room, you have substantial protection against searches and seizures. You have to get a subpoena or establish a higher level of cause. These kinds of photographs, the courts have heard it thus far, have determined that they're not really photographing anything that's all that protected at all.
I guess I'm not sure that I want our residents to have to challenge the Fourth Amendment of the Constitution or whatever, you know, to protect their privacy. All I'm saying is, it seems to me that when I read, it was kind of a limited scope. It was old people wandering around their loss, you know.
You're usually at Stormies.
Whatever, the Stormies. Just go out to Stormies, you'll find them. Oh, I'm sorry. You know, it's cars that have license plates that are in the criminal database, you know, that boom. That, I assume when they see that license plate, it triggers within 60 seconds an alert. That's kinda what I thought, but then when I read this, it felt like it got a little broader.
And looser, but I felt it extended the same way.
It's definitely like a positive action, it's like a passive, just kinda-
Well, it's so open-ended, I mean, 432, 5, C and D, I just about, and I share your libertarian leanings on things like this, so I probably have the same sensitivity. But, you know, when you start talking about, to a specific, I'd say, at the very end there, "Or departmental-related civil or administrative actions," I mean, what the hell is that? D, "Such data may be released to other authorized and verified law enforcement officials and agencies at any time." They're legitimate, now what the hell's legitimate? It's just- I, it's just loose language, Mark, I mean, from the standpoint of- Giving us comfort that we're gonna be limited? And when you, when you use words like limited, or department-related civil administrative actions, I mean, that's just awful. For people like me who really, really, really- Really treasure my privacy and, and, you know, the ability not to be on the grid, then to have to deal with this is challenging. I understand the need for it, there's no doubt about it, but I think the policy is loose. Too loose for, for, I think, I heard Bob say it, I've said it, Andy?
Yeah, I agree.
The policy, we have to be tightened up considerably before we put the switch on it. I think one way to go about this is if we feel comfortable moving ahead with the units- That we ask for a rewrite on the policy and something that is a little bit more consistent with your, with your staff report? Exposing the door. This is a really libertarian community too, Mark, and, you know, a lot of people feel like Bob and I do. We don't know what it is we don't like about it. Rob, I hear you, the other side being victimized, you know, there's push and pull, but, you know, this is scary stuff. Especially for- Maybe it's not as scary for millennials and Xers, but I'll tell you what, for boomers, this is scary stuff. So especially if you're leaning, you know, libertarian way.
So I think there could be some language differences if we're making it work. One concern would be, does it make sense that other communities using the system though, have a similar document? Because otherwise, oh, I can't share that with you, but I can share this with you. It seems like it has to be cohesive between all the users.
Both as a document that all the other communities are using, or do they have their own?
They've all created, like, Kennelworth is very tight, Kennelworth has a very tight one. Some of, like, some of the other communities are, like, I don't wanna single out any other, I don't wanna single out a specific community, but some of them are much broader. One thing that I've seen departments talk about is what they can and can't create a custom hot list for. So what they can and cannot create a custom hot list for. So like in your scenario before, when you were talking about Johnny is gonna sell weed, or something like that, that you don't feel like that is something that is reasonable? You guys putting limits on the level of crime that they can create a custom hot list for is certainly something that I've-
I don't think there's any dispute on the idea of cars with plates in the criminal system, database, coming in, identifying those. I, that seems pretty straightforward. It's just, and my guess is these restricted, you know, Kennelworth or whatever, they probably tightened around that with maybe a little beyond, but-
I mean, it was a year ago, so I don't specifically remember exactly what they did, I just remember there were a lot of conversations about it and a lot of, there was some back and forth.
No one's gonna dispute that this is probably a good service. Okay, so it's just a matter of how far you wanna take it.
Right, and as far as your concern, Bob, and others maybe, about tracking little Johnny selling drugs, these several cameras in a village aren't gonna track anybody ending up anywhere.
But now it's a network.
They're going through the intersection, like, even the other cameras in other communities. They're not going and tracking it to someone's exact house.
But they could.
No, they can't.
Yes, they can, because they leave.
They went through the intersection of Willow and Hibbert, and they go to my house in Ash. How does it ever know it got to Ash?
I don't know where the, well, I don't, I don't, but you know Johnny's going that way, or he's going out to Glenview, and he's cutting down whatever road in Northfield.
Even houses in there, like, you know, it's-
You're-
All he's doing is crossing through that camera that time.
You're surveilling, you're surveilling.
I'm playing devil's advocate to Bob's devil's advocate, which is-
That's a double, that's a double devil's advocate.
I, I kinda agree, I don't necessarily like being tracked. But I also, I gotta, something to trust our law enforcement to, I'm okay with tightening it a little bit, but I wanna tighten it so much you handcuff these guys from actually being proactive on certain things.
Not on everything.
But I just don't wanna, I mean, we gotta trust our police, if there's, if we see it going the wrong, the wrong way, we have the right, I hope we have the right to go back and say, no, this is not the way it was intended. I don't know, I guess I agree with tightening some, I agree with the tracking, I'm kind of a libertarian thinking way, but I also don't wanna get it so tight that they can't do a job.
Well, if there are tighter policy statements, maybe there are some templates to look at.
It should be, you're a little Johnny selling drugs, only way he's gonna get in that system is if it's reported that he stole some drugs, and he could be on the criminal report, and his license plate is there, and then he passes the intersection, and he knows it entered. But it's not gonna say, oh, you know, Johnny must be selling something.
It could be, it could be an active, they may not know that Johnny is selling, they suspect it, I mean, it's gray zone stuff. I think, I think it is.
If you add it to the, to the database, you better be told. What, what requirement do you have? Do you guys put it on, or?
So if, yeah, if we, if somebody reports that their car was stolen, if somebody reports that their loved one is missing and they took off in this car, we're gonna have those pieces of information entered into what's called a lead system. And that'll go out nationwide, statewide, nationwide. To your point about if you had somebody who had an arrest, who was wanted, and there was an arrest warrant, and law enforcement had actionable intelligence that that person was linked to this car, they could link the two. And then that would be one means for identifying, potential identifying somebody, but not for sure, right? Because you could stop a car, but you don't know who's driving it, I mean, there's a difference.
Do you have the ability to, I don't like general, I'm gonna try to put something like, do you have the ability to just put someone out there?
We would, there would have to be a legitimate investigative purpose to do something of that nature. Let me, let me say this, President Rents, Trustee Dearborn, I hear you. I hear what you're saying, this is, the beauty of this is at the bottom of it says draft. So, we can, we can, we can absolutely customize this. I mean, yes, we work with a company that has attorneys that are, they're, they help write and manage our policies, the hundreds and hundreds of policies that we have. So yes, you know, it is an initial first run by them, but we can, we can customize it, we can tighten it. To Trustee Apitop's point, you know, we want, we do wanna have the ability to use it as an investigative tool. Let me give you an example of that is, sometimes you have, so let's say you have, an incident happens in the middle of the night, a serious incident, a burglary, a home invasion, whatever it might be. And we had no, we had no ALPR hits, none, zero. So it wasn't a car that was entered in as a hot file, but if we have a limited window of time where we know this crime occurred between 2:00 AM and 4:00 AM, there's not that many cars driving around out there. It would be in our best interest to go and look and look at the license plates of the cars that came through at that period of time to at least begin to help our investigators use as a tool, to initially start to look at that. So that's why I say we have to be, I wanna completely respect everything you're saying, and I will, and will work on it. But I wanna also still be able to have some autonomy to be able to use as a tool, a legitimate tool.
It's great, that balance between the autonomy and tightening it up, because I know there'll be attention there. If you do have a very clear statement on purging, that'll help, strike that balance a little bit. Because it gives you lots of freedom in the heat of the moment when you're investigating things, but after 30 days, I don't want that stuff sitting around.
I can, I can step in on that. So the way, Flock actually is the entity doing the purging.
Good.
So basically the way that it works is every capture goes up to a seizure-certified Amazon cloud servers for 30 days. It's up there, during that time period, your law enforcement agency can look back at any of those captures, and if, at the end of those 30 days, if they have not saved anything as part of an active investigation, it's gone, and it's gone, gone. Like, like the FBI can't get to it, it is fully wiped. So after, so that, so Flock handles that portion of it.
Yeah.
And also, I did just wanna cover one thing that I heard earlier, with subpoenas. Again, because this is, the capture's made, it's sent straight off to third-party servers, and it's all metadata. A lawyer can't come and say, I want every capture in Wenecka for plate XR437. Because for Flock to do that, they would have to basically create the record to then turn over the record, because it hasn't been created yet. Now, there are audit trails on any searches or anything like that, anything that's been saved that are- Now, um, there are audit trails on any searches or anything like that, anything that's been saved that are internal to the system. So, um, if, if your department has invest, has made a search for that vehicle or anything like that, then they would have to turn that over as part of a FOIA request. But if, if that is just a car that's floating out around the world, that is not, uh, something that a lawyer can subpoena.
And that, that's a really important point, I, I... So, under the, under the rules of civil procedure, you're not required to create something that doesn't exist. So when you get a subpoena that says, give me all the hits for this plate, you don't keep information in that format?
No.
But when they come up with a, um, a suspect, you, um, ten days from now, can't, can't they, you know, and say...
Give us all the plate, give us the time period.
Over this period of time.
So, so they'll, so they'll, they'll be able to go into the system and search for that plate or for that vehi...
If it now is created.
Because now it's been created, 'cause if they've done that search, now that record is created. So if they, so if they can submit a FOIA request for this, I wanna, uh, has this vehicle ever been searched for? Yes, that's a FOIABLE request, because there's audit trail of, and that search has been recorded, there's now a record of, was that vehicle here? But if, uh, plate XR seven three, like, if that's what they wanna see, and you're a law enforcement agency, or any, no one has, has looked for that plate, that's all just metadata up there, and there's, there's no record to give them. So to supply the information, law enforcement would have to create that record to then give it to them.
What, what prevents the request from requesting requiring the law enforcement agency to create that record?
The thirty day thing makes it virtually impossible. Because, yeah, because, you know, like, let's take your typical divorce or civil action. It's not filed until there's a cause of action, something's happened, it's filed, served, the service period's gonna be like thirty days. You're not even in, you know, maybe someone could go in on some kind of emergency, but we don't really have that in the U.S. in a real easy way. Pre-litigation discovery, it doesn't really exist here, it does in other places. So that's why I'm so big on the thirty day.
So what's the magic of the thirty days?
Thirty days, um, it's, it's really impossible for civil...
Well, but from a, from a public safety standpoint...
Gives you the opportunity, you know...
What's the magic of that from a public, what have you, what have it said? Twenty days?
I, I'm shocked it's not ninety.
Oh, I don't, I don't, I'm just asking the question, why, you know, you, you have an investigation going on, you wanna find out where that car's been, why, why not twenty days? I mean, the, I assume, Andy, the shorter timeframe, the better.
Yeah, well, if you just think about like an investigation, um, you may not know that there's possibly relevant information. You might not have known, they, yeah, they rolled through there so that you should look. You might not even know a crime was committed until a couple of weeks later.
Well, and also, Trustee Dearborn, both the Secretary of State and the Central Illinois, um, as I understand it, the Central Illinois ACLU have said that the thirty day mark is the correct number. That was...
ACLU?
Yeah, if I'm not mistaken, that was in the city of Springfield. They were heavily involved, um, with the deployment of their cameras, and they, they said thirty days.
I'm surprised they even won any of this, the ACLU.
Hey, Mark, it might, it might be helpful if you also clarified the, the different timing track that begins once, uh, a photograph or data is sufficiently flagged. My understanding is that if you have, uh, photographs that are potentially the subject of an investigation, that they won't necessarily be deleted after thirty days. And what's getting deleted after thirty days is the re, is the residue of not...
And that was in the...
Significant information.
Yeah, no, it, the, the other, and that's the other thing, too, is that just because somebody files a FOIA request, or somebody, even if we receive a subpoena, there may absolutely be times where we're gonna deny it. We're gonna deny it. If somebody's filing, we get a subpoena from a divorce attorney about, you counsel away, and tell me if I'm wrong, but we don't even have to honor that under these circumstances.
Well, yeah, and, and, and it's probably helpful to distinguish, um, subpoenas from FOIA requests. There are certainly subpoenas, active, you know, judicial action, or, or some sort of a case that is, you know, on, on the horizon, contemplated probable cause. The, the gatekeeper with the subpoena is, is a judge that has to, to issue the subpoena that an attorney's requesting. That in and of itself requires discretion and can't be done for, like, a Chicago Tribune reporter wants to write an article about how, you know, two golf carts collided on the street or something like that, you need to have a possible judicial action. FOIA requests are open to, you know, there, there are far more reasons that people could submit FOIA requests, they're really endless, but there are specific exemptions that would apply to these photographs, the same way they'd apply to any other Village Record. So for instance, if this data was already mixed within the leads database, that's potentially a basis for denying a, a request. If the photograph is being used to attach a, a, an individual person to a license plate in the photo, that might be a basis under FOIA to, um, deny the request. Um, and, and then I think, like you've alerted to, alluded to, there are unduly burdensome exemptions to FOIA. Somebody can't say, you know, give me every photograph of a black sedan that has driven around, you know, down Tower Road in the past thirty days, that's unduly burdensome. And of course, you can't be asked to create a record that doesn't actually exist. So if it's clearly, clearly not the way that that data is stored, that too potentially is a basis for denying a FOIA request, albeit, I'm imagining at some point that requesters learn to, you know, request the data the way that it's stored.
The good thing, though, is if we have a real clear purging, you don't end up in all these fights. 'Cause instead, you just file a simple response, it just doesn't exist.
Not only at Flock, it has to be at the police department to make sure that wherever they download...
Well, so if they're downloading it...
No, not if it's, not if it's an ongoing investigation, that's the appointment.
If you have to be somewhere else, oh, I don't need that anymore, just make sure it's gone.
So, yeah, if they're downloading, it's gonna be for investigative purposes, but otherwise, it's just in the AWS server.
And, and they, they already have their own, your own records policy, that as soon as you download the data, it goes into whatever their, your guys' current record policy is. It kinda goes away from LPR. And you guys will get FOIAed, there's like, my, my, uh, uh, any, what does need to get turned over? Anytime you mention LPR in email, uh, any, anything like that, your audit logs are all FOIABLE, um, all those things, um, like, if you just Google, uh, fo-, uh, LPR, Illinois, FOIA, there... My, my, I have a lot of emails that have been posted on websites over the last, uh, several bits from, um, different departments being FOIAed for information about LPR.
So that's why I'm big on the purge thing. It avoids the fight.
Well, I still think it should be tightened up.
Yeah.
But, my... So, I do, too.
I'm really trying to get comfortable with this, and, and Chief, you and your department are not the issue here.
No.
Because I know you as a person, and I know the people that you hire, and how you train people, and it's remarkable. And it's exceptional, and it's not the norm. And that's the part that worries me, is we have a really, really unbelievable police department here that I think people in this community trust implicitly. And it's not about the Winnetka Police, you know, but we can't be comfortable that, when we cross over the Edens, that, that the approach, the mindset, the attitude, and the compassion in the intellect is gonna be the same. Okay, just like we don't know when we cross over into Scott, whether we're gonna receive, you know, similar thoughtful treatment, whether we're breaking a law or not. And so that's the struggle, and that's why I think, you know, I'm concerned about loose language and, and a specific sort of, you know, enablements that I don't think we really feel comfortable with in this document. But it's not about the Winnetka Police Department at all, you know? And that's why I came here and I'm thinking, jeez, do I even bother saying anything? But I'm so uncomfortable with any sort of mitigation of personal freedoms that it's really hard for me. But I think if we had a good policy that made it so comfortable that, that we knew what this is gonna be used for, and that it wouldn't be hanging around, and that Bayhavon wouldn't decide one morning, he's gotta fill a budget hole, and he comes down and says, okay, here's the entire list of all of the license plates in our community that haven't bought Village stickers yet.
Ooh, there's an idea.
Yeah, exactly, and that's when it starts to get creepy.
Well, then, again...
'Cause I got three cars in my driveway that totally have stickers.
You know what, you know what, the executive summary...
I don't believe in them either.
You know, again, Chris, the executive summary talked about deterring auto-related crimes in addition, missing persons, endangered elderly and amberly. That's what the scope of the executive summary was. This is just much beyond that.
Well, let's ask a question about the homicide investigation, which I think we're intending to go into detail, but that went out in a review of this, to be...
Well, but if, if, if that license plate became in the database, then, then it's part of the auto-related crime, I guess. So, so, especially what, sometimes the, the picture that Flock takes for us at that 3:00 AM homicide, it's captured, we investigate that license plate as a result of that picture that leads to the arrest of the homicide offenders. So it, it's not necessarily one pattern, how we get to, we, it would be from that photo, we develop multiple causes, especially if you can't do that around... Well, maybe you can, in the policy, account for that type of situation.
I think, I think it's those, the ones that were, there wasn't, I agree with you, however, I don't, well, like, I worry about the scenarios of people that...
Right.
Tragic, um, by maybe getting too tight.
Yeah, I understand.
I think the game has changed significantly since when we're...
And I, I hear you, and I, I'm, I don't like, you know, being watched too closely myself. Um, but the game has changed from the time we grew up here, and these guys need as much technology to fight what's coming up our way as they can get, in, in my estimation. I've seen it, you've seen it change dramatically. I mean, I, obviously, I'm, I'm a little more centered because I've been hit while I've been, I've been children at home.
Yeah, I guess Rob would question, how far are you going there? I mean, I, that's, you know, there's no privacy anywhere anymore. I mean, we're all surveilled, and, you know, your refrigerator's surveilling you. That's surveilling us.
That should be, that should be with us all.
I know.
I'm on Facebook and Instagram, so I've taken the first steps.
I told my sister with I-Pass.
No, you, you know what, I get that. The question's how, you know, on something like this, do we just, is it car flash, or is it, are there limits to it?
I think you, I think you, I'm fine with tightening it a little bit, but, but honestly, I'm not putting the handcuffs so tight that what Kim was saying is, you know, I don't know if they would've caught the guys that were ramshacking through the, through, through these communities for years. This would've caught, I think this would've caught them much sooner, and, you know, would've been relieved a lot of residents from having sleepless nights, so...
There's a happy end.
Yeah, I, I would think so.
Yes, I agree.
Things that can come up, take enough of these, that it's a whole new process. I think, I think...
I, I have a, I have a quick question for you, Trustee. So is, is your concern more about, uh, than, uh, your law enforcement being flagged when there is a, a vehicle going through? Or is your concern more of a crime has happened and they need to go figure it out? And like, how much power do they have to look at a scope of vehicles to narrow down their investigation?
I think, I'll add, I have no problem with, if a, if a license plate's in the database, there's a crime or suspected reasonable suspicion of a crime related to a car license plate, put that in the system, figure it out. But I, I think there are other investigations that are non-auto-related that could be potentially thrown into this bucket, all of a sudden, we're surveilling. I'm, you know, a broader surveillance program concerns me a little bit. That's all.
I, I think we wanna keep the discretion judgment of law enforcement and how they sort these things out, but I think if we had a threshold, uh, so instead of just saying, any patrol operation or official department investigation, if there's some sort of threshold there, uh, like, you know, for serious crimes, anything involving health, life, safety, recovery of stolen property... You know, like, I think you could probably put your, your threshold there as opposed to trying to put the restriction on reasonable suspe-, no reasonable suspicion or probable cause. I, I would leave that as you have it, uh, reasonable suspicion or probable cause now required, because you don't wanna invite a situation where we're litigating over whether we applied our own rules properly, 'cause that'd be a nightmare. So I want you to have the discretion, and I don't want you always thinking about it. I think it should be real simple, is this something that is sufficiently serious that we're going to look at this data, which we recognize, this kind of sensitive stuff? So I think the threshold is along the lines of what it is that you're investigating, I think, and it might be just we have like a sentence, and I think it might...
Felonies versus...
Right, maybe it's...
I mean, I don't know.
I, I think it's a combination of the seriousness of the offense, or and/or if it's recovery of stolen property, or property, or anything involving life, health, or safety, you know?
Can you put it there? You can't, the police department can't be hired to trace a car without...
Well, maybe if, if we don't feel comfortable, then you could do some exclusions, but I think that's the concept, though, is you're defining it around what is sufficiently serious enough that we can look our residents in the eye and say, you know, there's a trade-off here, this is serious stuff. If your kid was kidnapped, if your car was stolen, you'd wanna be able to look at this data, 'cause, you know, um, so I think that's where you put the tightening.
Just to clarify, every, every search that is made, uh, when they do a search, they have to put in a reason for the search. Um, and then every camera is auditable by who searched it, by the network it was searched, uh, or, you can do audits by network, by user, and by individual camera. So, um, you'll be able to pull an Excel spreadsheet of every search that was done on the Willow camera by black Ford, uh, truck, uh, this was the reason, a lot of departments do case numbers, uh, but the reason for it, um, so you can see if there's a specific officer who's doing a lot of searches, that might look a little funky, or, so you can see everything. Um, if you are sharing with your neighbors, you will see any search that was done on your cameras by your neighbors, um, so there are full audit logs that, um, uh, that go along with all this.
But also, that those logs can be purged thirty days?
No, those are, those are, uh...
That's the audit log.
Those are, those are indefinite.
Andy, to your point, to your point, and this gets to Chris's comments in the last section there about, you know, department-related civil or administrative action, I think that's where it kinda gets...
I agree.
Loose. I mean, you're saying...
Tighten that.
Tighten up serious crimes, serious issues, or, or if you showed this to your neighbor, and say, okay...
Here are the reasons for looking at this stuff.
I understand, for a serious crime, this could be really a murder, helpful kidnapping.
Burglary?
Burglary, that's a felony, I assume burglary is a felony.
Not always.
But, but drug dealing, I mean, I don't know, drug dealing, whatever, you know, I mean, there are some lesser reasons. I mean, I don't know if domestic violence would be part of this or not, I mean, I don't know.
General is protection of life, health, safety, and property, that might be enough, but I, I think wanna look at... Yeah, whether it's a misdemeanor or not, because, yeah, I mean, if, if we're protecting life, health, safety, property, I'm okay with it, if the data's purged after thirty days.
Well, let's see if there's a way to tighten up.
Yeah, so we can do two things. One is first on whether we're into this program, and I think there's pretty, everybody is into the idea about, about doing this. But the, the, uh, policy has gotta be tightened up. Now, the good news, news is, is if you issue a purchase order tomorrow, we're not gonna see these things for six months, right?
Well, I mean, if we're going on I dot roads, um, then it does take four...
Sheridan's I dot, Green Bay Road is I dot, Willow Road is I dot, and Tower is I dot.
What we, what we'll do is we will, we will look at, at the road, look at the, the, the Capua County, uh, plot, uh, plot maps, and see if there are places that I dot right of ways are very small. And if there's like, uh, maybe you have a city pole that's in a flower, but it's just outside the I dot right of way, then we would look to try and install on things like that. Um, but in a scenario where we can't find anything that gets us outside the I dot right of way, those would be four to six months. Anything that doesn't, that we find that doesn't need a permit would go up in about three to six weeks, if you want us to do it that quickly.
It's either way, the policy is to...
Yeah.
Then us decide if a permit would be...
Yeah, and, yeah, we, we don't flip anything on until you guys give us the green light. So even if we put them up there, just hang up.
There's that Tower Road, yeah, Winnetka's returning part of the road, it's not I dot?
Only up to where the monument is.
Okay, so that's where you should put a non-I dot camera.
I dot can, oh, well, that's right, we control up to that point, that's a good point, yeah.
So, I mean, that could be one, it could be, you know, thirty-four weeks, you got it.
So, Ta- uh, Tower's getting pretty covered already.
Yeah, I mean, we, we wanna be strategic with our partners for where...
Yeah, so, I know, uh, Glencoe definitely is doing a Tower Road one, I believe, uh...
Tower and, Tower, Tower and Frontage.
Yeah, Tower Frontage, who's just south of Tower Frontage?
Yeah, I was gonna say, they don't have any jurisdiction over anything east of the Eden, so...
I think that's where the weed shop is gonna be.
We, we would be, we would be doing Tower and Forestway.
Okay, you, you were the, okay, yeah, I'm sorry, you guys were the other one, yeah, I'm sorry.
No, we found out recently that we actually own that section.
Right, so there's, there's, positive, positive power wire, no solar panel.
Right.
Yeah, how do people feel on the...
There's no power east of, east of Forestway.
There's no light bulb there anywhere?
I've already asked Brian about that, so...
I don't, I don't think electricity being drawn by a tiny camera's gonna make a difference in global warming.
Well, I think you're saying, you have the obvious nature of...
It's done, so...
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's great.
Cam, that's great, if you have power.
Okay, so we're good with, with Mark moving, moving forward as proposed on this thing?
Yeah, absolutely.
We would like to see the policy just rewritten or, or tightened up or whatever, Mark, and we can take care of that on, on, when you're ready. It's not gonna prevent you from getting the cameras and getting everything, we just want to make sure that the policy is consistent. Uh, and I think that speaks to the trust we have, knowing that if we buy these things, you're not gonna screw off and. Huh? Oh, yeah.
I'll definitely ask him to bring it back. I mean, we could maybe even have it, uh, you know, if you need to do it at the council meeting, or you can just look at your weekly, uh, your weekly, you know, update. So.
I, I, I'll, I'll, I'll see if the power of the other communities that have already jumped into this is, that means we, we are standing alone. It really is the power of the network, you can see people kind of traversing.
And get a copy of their policy.
Well, I, I asked Chris to get Kennelworth's policy, so we can take a peek at that, and you can circulate that to everybody.
Yeah, absolutely.
Great, so, thank you.
Well, President Rents, I appreciate your comments, appreciate all of your comments, um, and your support, and we will certainly work with the Village Attorney on, um, tightening up the policy and getting it to a level that you're comfortable with.
And, and I know this, I know my personal experience is, is probably highly informed by the fact that I grew up with an uncle that was a cop, and he was in my back pocket twenty-four, seven, so, I mean, the second he moved to Florida was one of the happiest days of my life. Thank goodness he did that, though, I, because I probably would have ended up in a lot more trouble than I got in, so, all right. We good, we good, guys?
Yeah, all good.
Okay, uh, motion to adjourn.
So, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We stand adjourned.